Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
I would like to call this meeting in order for the Bellis Falls Union High School District. It is Monday, April 11th. We're at the Bellis Falls Union High School. And one of the things we missed, but I'm gonna put it on there before we adjust the agenda, I would like to pledge the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adjustments to the agenda. On nine, I'd like to put an A. We had tabled a motion for the BLM flag. And it was tabled to come to this meeting, which I missed that, so we're gonna add that to the agenda as nine A. Review, anybody else have any adjustments? Looks like we have none. Review and approve board minutes of March 28th. Anyone have any adjustments on meeting minutes? June?
On page four. The, my name is spelled incorrectly under eight. Under the As. She just needs to spell my name all out. I think her brain got ahead of her fingers.
Got it. So June the street. Anything else, June?
That's all I have.
Priscilla?
Uh, yeah, the, on page, on that same page. When Jason questioned the conflict of issue, it, he questioned a teacher on the negotiation committee. Not a former teacher.
It was mentioned that I am a former teacher in Rockingham.
Right, but, and a teacher at this point, so we can put both if you want.
So it says, the issue with having our new board member who is a former teacher, which that is correct, right?
In Rockingham.
Okay, and what was the other, I don't see.
And she, and the teacher in Chester. She talked about, about.
So you're just gonna add Rockingham and a former teacher in Rockingham and where else?
And a, and a current teacher in Chester. Is that correct, Pam?
Yes.
And then on page two. The motion to table, the motion was to table the motion until the next meeting that we voted on.
Absolutely.
So Pamela, I just wanna, I wanna double check with you. Cause I make this mistake all the time. My wife's name is Pamela and I call her Pam or Pammy, but I just wanna make sure, cause I thought you would wanted a specific name the last time. So I just wanna make sure, cause I'll screw it up.
I, I prefer Pamela. I go by Pamela. I have a coworker who goes by Pam. It really helps differentiate between the two of us, but I, my personal preference is Pamela.
Thank you. As Priscilla said it, I, all of a sudden I was like, oh no, my brain and that, I didn't wanna, I, so.
Yeah, and Molly, can I apologize to Pamela for, for doing that? I know she said that at the last meeting. But I know how names are important.
Any other patient?
Molly, I know that after the presentation of the black flag, Black Lives Matter flag. There was several, it was almost like a roundtable discussion of all the directors' comments, but I don't see them in here anywhere. I could be wrong, but somebody else see them, please.
They're on seconds of the last page.
Well, that's our director's.
So it was like right after the president, Grace's presentation, but I don't.
I think it was just condensed into.
Goes into bullet, bullet points, so I just.
And if it's. Molly, on, on the first page, there's eight.
Jason was talking. Thank you.
So yeah, so there's eight B, then there's a presentation, but then it goes into Pastor Noise, Mr. Bannock, Chuck Lawrence, and then June made a motion, but I, I know specifically I was talking about the American flag and that's not in there. And I don't remember exactly what I was saying, but but I know everyone had comments and I don't see them anywhere. Are they supposed to be there or is it just conjecture?
Typically you try to graph, you don't do a verbatim. But if there are people missing, we can go back and I can ask them to double check though. Just to have a point that each person made a comment or whatnot, so I follow that.
Okay, thank you.
Brendan, did you have something?
No, I was just agreeing that you didn't have one of the board.
Priscilla, do you have something in mind?
No, I mean, if Jason wants that added, that was fine. I just was pointing out that they were there and I thought he had missed it, so I was trying to tell you that that's where they were. Molly, sorry if I interrupted.
So do we want to approve these minutes or you want?
Molly, I have an adjustment to those minutes as well. I did not participate in the executive session. That's not reflected in the minutes.
Would we like to approve the minutes or would we like to have them come back next month?
If we're adding in the discussion, I would like to.
Okay. So I think that's probably a good idea. We are not going to approve the minutes for March 28th until we get all corrections done. Thank you. Communication and public comments? Andrea?
Could I ask just, if people can come, the closer you are to the microphones, the owls, it's better for picking up sound. Yeah, so I'm just saying that, cause it doesn't always pick up the sound the best.
Hi, everybody. My name's Andrea Carlson and I'm a resident of Westminster. A parent of a ninth grader and a school counselor here at Bellis Falls Union High School. I wanted to start by taking a moment to acknowledge the courage and bravery of Grace Warriors. And recognize how impressive it was to see an intelligent, thoughtful, and well-spoken student take the time to speak at the last minute about something that is extremely important to her. She was exceptionally poised even while facing a roomful of some might consider angry white men. Thank you, Grace. I would also like to give some context as to why students and staff at BFUHS may have signed the petition that she shared. I want to be clear that I'm not here to discuss the Black Lives Matter flag, although I do support it being raised. I've worked here for 20 years and during that time in my role as a counselor, it has been reported to me numerous times each year that racial incidents happen regularly in our school community. Unfortunately, as they do in every high school in Vermont. In my role as a parent, it has been reported to me that racial incidents happen regularly at BFUHS. Imagine being a black student, sitting at lunch, and you hear a student say, "Black lives don't matter." At the last meeting, it was reported that a student attending the meeting said that exact thing in the cafeteria. Any student of color who heard, who heard that was impacted, as were their white allies. Let's imagine that hearing that felt like being punched. Imagine hearing the N-word said repeatedly at school, as many students do not realize that even though they hear it in a song, it does not make it okay to say. Each time the N-word is said, it's another punch. Imagine being an Asian student, sitting in the library, and a student across the room looks at you and slants their eyes and laughs. Again, it's like a punch in the gut. Imagine sitting in class and the N-word is written on your desk. Another punch in the gut. Jewish jokes, Mexican jokes, Muslim jokes, punch, punch, punch. Some days, we have students walk out of our building and they feel like they've been punched a dozen times. They leave the high school with the message that their lives don't matter. Do you think those students want to come to the school? Do you know that they are unable to learn because they feel unsafe? Do you know that BIPOC students are less likely to graduate high school than their white peers? Did you know that every year BIPOC students in the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union District choose to go to school elsewhere? Because they are aware of the lack of diversity and the racism at BFUHS? Do you realize that our students are at a disadvantage when they leave BFUHS because they have no clear understanding of diversity and equity? The impact is large. I imagine you are wondering what is currently being done about this. When incidents of racism are reported, our administration acts swiftly to investigate and respond. Harassment is not tolerated at BFUHS when it is reported. Unfortunately, most incidents are not reported. Students are scared to make reports as they fear retaliation, or they don't want more attention brought upon them. When you look around and barely anyone looks like you, it is intimidating to speak up and make a report. I hear about it regularly in the counseling office. Students are scared. What else is being done? Five years ago, I joined the WNESU Diversity and Equity Committee. Since joining, I'm sad to report that very little, other than an amazing diversity art exhibit in town, has been done to address the racism that exists in our school. There is a small group of staff who volunteer their time to attend a meeting outside of the school day once a month. And we do not have the resources or power to make the change needed. So now what? I believe we need someone in the district whose job or part of their job is to create and lead a diversity and equity program to help make our schools safe for everyone. We need all the school board members, administrators, teachers, support staff, food service employees, custodians, and bus drivers to have anti-bias and anti-racism training. We need a full-time restorative practices person at the elementary and middle schools and a full-time restorative practices person at the high school. The need is too great to have one person spread across all of the schools. With a robust diversity and equity program and restorative practices program, our students can learn how to be respectful, caring, and welcoming to everyone, no matter what they look like, where they are from, or what their faith is. Programs such as these could potentially improve our graduation rate and bring back students in our community who choose to go to other high schools. At this point, when someone walks into the high school, they do not feel like all lives matter. We need to fix that. We need all students to feel safe when they come to school so they can learn and graduate and become outstanding members of our community and whichever communities they may end up in. Thank you for your time. I know you're all here because you wanna make sure every student is given the best education possible. And because of this, I feel assured that you will do what is needed to address this issue.
Anyone else, have any comments?
Jessa has a rate, Amber? Jessa, online?
Jessa?
Hello. I don't have prepared remarks for tonight. I'd forgotten about the meeting, but I did want to stand up and just express my dismay at some of the displays of ignorance that went on last time we all met here. There is a point where will for ignorance becomes malice and certain people who spoke definitely have reached that. That is embarrassing as a taxpayer, as one of your constituents, as a parent of a child in this district. I can see why a lot of people don't feel safe there. There was a group assembled behind some of the board members that certainly looked like they were there to intimidate a 17-year-old girl. But I guess my biggest concern that I just wanna raise is that you're in charge of the education of an entire district. And the level of ignorance displayed was a bit horrifying. Bradboro has a big chapter of the National Socialist Club, which is a white supremacy and Nazi organization. Springfield has multiple white supremacy organizations that have had events in front of the co-op. And the extreme naivety or mental gymnastics to think that it's not happening in your district is a bit disturbing. It definitely happens. There's trucks with Confederate flags on them. And those kids might not know what it means. Or they do, and you're ignoring it. So I'm just, I would like to see more education for the board members. I would like to see people at least pretending they know a little bit more about what's going on, just in our tiny local microcosm. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments for public comments? I see none. Michelle?
Um, yeah, hi. I wasn't planning to speak, but I'm, I guess I wanted to ask a question first. It was my understanding from looking at the agenda for the upcoming meeting on 4/25 that there was gonna be a committee that was looking into the, the BLM flag issue and that the issue was, was warned for 4/25. So I'm a little surprised to see that a decision is being made about it today, because I thought that there was gonna be some more processing and that a decision was gonna be made in two weeks. So I guess it's more of a question than a, than a statement. What, what happened with that? Because I, I know some people that were planning to come and make statements on 4/25, cause that's where it was warned. And the fact that it was changed on short notice is a bit of a concern to me, cause I, I think it's really important that we have time to process this issue fully with input from the community. I know a woman who has a very extensive diversity background who wanted to talk to board members before this was decided about, and she hasn't had a chance to talk to people yet. So I guess I, if, if it's appropriate for me to ask that question, I, I would love to hear, does it have to be today that you make the decision, or could you keep it as it was warned for the 25th after you've had time to look at some of the issues that came up the last time, like, would it make sense to consider a policy that would have different flags able to fly, not just BLM, but other flags? Cause I know that was an issue that came up the last time.
Michelle, normally we don't answer questions during public comments, but I will tell you that there will be, we, we're not going to take any action tonight. This is a policy. This is something that needs to be written in a policy. We've only had two weeks. It takes time to draw a policy out. Policy has to be out for 10 days for read before it gets approved. And then it comes back to the board. This is not gonna get anything done now. It's not gonna get anything done in two weeks. This takes time.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. I just, I, I heard an announcement at the beginning of the meeting and I, I wasn't sure exactly what that meant. So thank you. I, I appreciate you taking care to do, do a thorough investigation of this issue and, and consider it carefully. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything on that screen?
Nothing on the screen.
Okay. We need to move into executive session for student matter. Can we move to the fishbowl?
We can.
Does it make sense to put it later in the meeting?
Nope. We have parents waiting. And I had the verbiage, but can somebody help me with the verbiage to go into executive session to protect student and?
Move to go into executive session to discuss a student matter that public knowledge could cause adverse effect upon.
Thank you very much.
Student. And invite administration.
All those in favor of going to executive session, Deborah?
Aye.
Pamela?
Aye.
That's all I got there, right? Jason?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
June?
Aye.
David?
Abstain.
Priscilla?
Aye.
Margaret?
Yeah.
We are out of executive session with no action taken. Oh, we're not there yet? Sorry. Is stuff gonna go away?
What?
It's gonna just have it from here. Yeah.
Yes, it's gonna go away.
You guys got 30 seconds? 30 seconds. We got 10 seconds.
You know, patience isn't my strong point.
It's a virtue. Six. Three. It's gonna magic repair.
That's what I'm waiting for, Deb.
So we see Deborah, that's when you know.
And thank you. We are coming out of executive session with no action taken. Number six, presentation from science teacher and tour of the labs. We just did that.
All right, let me get this.
Um, I shared a presentation with Andy and just to introduce myself, I'm Kristin Gachalk, Science Department Coordinator. Teacher, it's my 26th year teaching here. Uh, this year will mark that I've been teaching here half my life at the end of the year, so that's kinda scary. Thanks for taking the time to listen today. Molly invited me to present to the board and the community about the current state of the science lab facilities. So.
So while we're waiting for Andy, I'd just like to take a second.
Sure.
So I, I invited the science department to come here because we had an ESSR meeting, which is our grant money. No, it wasn't ESSR, I'm sorry. It was HABER. And as we were speaking about how we were going to maybe use this money we had, this lady was sitting over here going. And so I've been on this board for quite a while and had never had it brought to my attention that maybe our science labs were back in the 1940 type things. We got sinks that don't work and no gas and so when I heard that, that is why we're here, because you know, until we know that, we can't help fix it. And if that is the case, then, you know, that's part of, part of our job as board members is to try to make sure that, you know, we're doing the right thing fiscally to make sure our teachers can teach our kids and have them ready for their career paths or college or wherever they go. So that's why we're here, because I was very interested in her hand going like this. Because she brought up points that I had never heard, so here we are. Thank you for coming.
No, thank you very much. Um, so do I, do I snap my finger?
Yeah, there you go.
So.
You can throw a bottle at me.
So the, the little PowerPoint type presentation I have might take 10 minutes, eight to 10 minutes, but again, I'm happy to take a walk through the science lab with anybody who wants to go and see stuff, just ignore my mess. I'll be covering just the age of the labs, the safety, cause preparedness. I've got some pictures. We can do the walkthrough. And then in terms of the proposal, we're just at the very beginning stages, so I'll just talk briefly about forming a committee and figuring out how to get an estimate and stuff like that. So who knows the answer? The science labs are original from when the building was built in what year? Or number one?
697.
697. Oh, you've got a hint here.
1972, I believe.
Oh, I, I heard 70. Jim DeBelle told me 70. I have a prize for the winner. Jim DeBelle's probably right, then Andy gets the prize. But you can have one too if you want.
First graduating class was 72.
First graduating class?
73, 72, 73 class was the first one that graduated.
Okay.
From here.
A little bit of fun, but point being that the science labs are the original labs that were created at that time. And if you try to imagine the advancement in science technology since 1970, I'm sure you could picture that things have changed since then, right? So many parts of the lab are damaged, non-functional. I put a couple pictures up there. On the left, you just see some graffiti and broken cabinet latches and things like that. In the middle is a non-functional hood, like a chemical hood where you mix chemicals and it's supposed to ventilate properly. The third picture over is just a a surface that goes around the sink like this stone, chemical resistant surface that borders the sink. That's just resting there. It would move if you moved it like I did for the picture. And then that top picture, that's kinda hard to tell what it is, but there's some gas and water faucets that don't do anything and they're just this big lab station. Multiple large lab stations that just take up space. They're basically a place to put your table against. At this point. And then a little bit of the psychology, I threw this in here, cause it interests me. The psychology of messy areas is that disorder breeds more disorder. When an area is trashed, so to speak, kids keep trashing it. And if stuff is nice, kids think, oh, this is a nice thing. We should take care of it. And this is just something that's been proven time again in psychological research. Um, another issue is safety. I threw a few pictures up here. That first one on the left is duct tape over a, a open outlet, electrical outlet that shouldn't, shouldn't really be used, so we put duct tape over it. You can see that the, the faceplate there is broken. That probably wouldn't be a difficult fix at all, but there's just like sharp edges and there's, you know, things that I'm not an OSHA person. I don't know that it violates anything officially, but it doesn't feel very safe sometimes. Um, and along, uh, things I don't have pictures of are, we do have an updated Iowa station and chemical shower, emergency shower in the chem lab. Our new chemistry teacher who joined this last school year was adamant about updating that material and that has been great. And we can take a look at that if we go through the lab. But I would say that we need updated Iowa stations in some of the other areas too. This is what a college lab looks like. So college preparedness is another really important reason why we need to update the labs, because students who, even if they're excellent students, strong science students, going into the sciences, if they walk into a college lab for the first time, they might feel a little bit unprepared. Um, I have another slide. The next slide is also a college lab. This is another one. And I actually got a quote from a former student, "The first time walking into a college science lab was intimidating. It was a shock to see that much new equipment." Now, obviously, it can, any kid can be nervous, whether they're prepared or not, walking into a science lab, but we don't wanna, we don't wanna create a situation where they're feeling a little bit behind the curve. Um, most high school labs look like this. I got the picture on the left from Springfield, Massachusetts High School. I can't remember where the one on the right was from, but this is what a typical science lab that's up to date looks like. And the reason I chose these two pictures is that they show both the stationary water and gas resources around the periphery of the first room or on the perimeter with rolling lab tables to facilitate rearranging if needed. And then that second picture shows more of a fixed lab station with the, the sink and gas built in, and of course, electrical outlets and things like that. That's kind of what we're, that's pretty standard. You know, most high schools that you walk into are gonna look more like that. And this is another one that shows the rolling lab tables with the, the more fixed units on the periphery. So this is just a quick little map of the science department lab areas. They're, they're listed by name. You know, we have an unusual building, so we have trouble. We don't have room numbers. We just list things by name. Mr. Norkin's old room. We're hoping to hire Mr. Peister for the fall. Number two is a former science computer lab, but since we went to one-to-one Chromebooks, we don't really have a need for computer labs, so to speak. Number three is my room. Number four, Mr. Arrow, the physics lab. And number five, the old Miss Steiner's room, chemistry lab is now Miss Murray's room. So I just put together on the next slide a table of what we would want on, in each room. This may be more information than we need at this point, but some some labs could have the fixed stations on the perimeter and then movable lab tables and then other other rooms could have more of the fixed stations. Like the chem lab, I think, is pretty traditional. You need the fixed, we maybe don't need it, but it's good to have that fixed station with the gas and the water and the electrical right there. Um, other teachers, if they're using the lab tables a little bit less frequently, they might prefer the, just the perimeter, all those resources on the perimeter and then being able to move the tables with those casters on the bottom of them. But like I said, that might. But like I said, that might be more information than you need. Um, we need a committee. In the past, um, and since I've been here twenty-six years, I could think of two or three other times where, you know, roaching the subject of can we renovate the labs? We really need to renovate the labs. The department had been asked, come up with a plan, come up with a, you know, and asking the teachers to get out a piece of graph paper is just kind of impractical. Like, I'm not a contractor. I I'm not a plumber, I'm not electrician, I don't know how these things work. I don't even really know how to estimate the costs of all this, to be honest with you, but that's why I think we need a committee. And um, I did find a few resources though. Uh, a few companies. The first one is in Massachusetts. Um, the other two I'd have to do a little bit more research on, but all three of these companies will do high school, well, any school, they do college also, um, lab renovations. And so at least I got started and, and there's links on there if we want to know more about companies that do that to try to get a sense of what we're taking on. But um, luckily, the chemistry teacher was part of a committee at one of her older schools that did do lab renovations and she she has a little bit of background in terms of what um, safety requirements you need for the chemistry lab. And um, she could tell me a little bit more about what might be expected. I mean, when her school did it, it took a long time. And that concerns me. I, I would really ideally and ideally you'd get it all done during the summer, obviously. Um, I do know some schools have construction going on during the school year, but those tend to probably not be open concept schools. I can't imagine jackhammering through the through the um concrete floor to put down new water lines while schools in session. I don't think that would really work. So that's basically my presentation.
Thank you. Sure. Would the members like to take a five-minute walk through the science labs or did we just see what we need to say?
Pamela has a question also.
Pamela.
Hi Pamela.
Hi. So I just wanted to say that I would be actually interested in being the board member. I um, know what the science labs look like. My son was um a former student at Bellas Falls for his ninth and tenth grade year. And I did get a chance to walk along, around the labs then. And I know they desperately need updating and I agree that I think it's the right move for us to do and I would be fully supportive of this.
You're saying you'd volunteer to be on the committee? Is that what you started with?
Yes, I do. And as an educator, I can understand because we want really good stuff to prepare our students for the future. And we need the correct tools to do such. So I'm fully in support of that.
Thank you.
Jason, uh, Scott Chuck, um, we've never met, but you've had all my kids and next year you're getting another one, Addison.
Great.
In high school. When um, my son John won the um, RPI math science award. Um, I'm embarrassed what that looks like. I mean, that, that outlet, uh, cover for the outlet, that's a fifty-seven cent fix. I mean, I don't know why we, I'll go do it right now.
Right. If we're only that, yes.
And I don't understand that if we're preparing our kids, we're preparing them to fail. And we have this nice, I don't know what this thing costs right here, but we don't need this. We don't need this television screen right here that costs god knows what, but we can fix things that need attention right now. And I don't even think we need a committee, just I don't understand why, why we do things the way we do things in a school or in society makes, doesn't make sense to me. Um, so, you know, in the restaurant business, you have to remodel your restaurant every like five, six years, you have to give it a whole new, whole new scheme or you don't see customers. And it's kind of the same thing here. It's probably not even just the science department. It's probably a lot of departments here. And that's uh, that's sad to me that, that um what are we doing? It doesn't make sense to me. So I'll fully, I fully support whatever you need.
Thank you.
Doesn't sound like we're getting any um complications here.
Well, no, I wasn't expecting to, but.
I think, you know, I think the pictures have shown us, pictures are worth a thousand, are great. Um, and just by listening to the last time I talked to you, it was always need to give it some attention. So we started the ballroom, you know, a board member. I honestly believe, you know, Jason and I are kind of in that business where maybe we know people who do things like this, but probably you have um done what you need to do by finding a company that actually works in student labs because, you know, people around here, you know, you have plumbers and electricians, but you really have companies close to us that know what a lab ought to have in it. Um, I think we need to, you know, you need to pursue those and at least get some just get some figures and see what we're doing. You know, nothing's gonna get done this year. Everybody is.
Of course.
But let's.
I don't even really know how a project this big, you, don't you pay for a detailed estimate? I mean, you can't get like a free estimate the way you could get a free estimate if you renovate your bathroom, right?
Sometimes.
With the, with the science.
It depends on the company you speak to.
If it's what they do and they ship a crew in here to do it, then they may, but they at least ask the question.
Yeah.
You know, it won't hurt to ask the question. And then if we've got a, you know, if we've got a vote on some money, then we'll do that. But come to us with what you're looking for.
A lot, a lot of times ago, Mike gets someone in to give you some estimates and give you some numbers. Uh, you gotta be careful because of the bid process, because you can't give that person a head start type of stuff, but when you do a bid and goes out the bid and then, then you get your hard numbers.
Right. I think this is why I need a committee because I don't feel like, and, and one of the reasons it hasn't happened yet is that this kind of thing needs a champion. This needs somebody to push for it and do all the work after school and at night. And we've all got dinner to make and kids to feed and stuff like that. So that's probably why it hasn't happened yet. And I would love any help from Pamela, anybody else would be awesome.
Priscilla.
Um, I'll correct myself first. It was seventy-one, seventy-two was the first year that we had students. No, no, no. David had seventy. He's probably absolutely right. Um, how about the floor outlets? When I was here, I had one of my students who was down there. It wasn't my class. It was one of the science ones that stuck something in one of the outlets and shocked it and the outlet wasn't working after that. Are any of the floor outlets working? Are they, do they need repair? Some of them still, or are they, have they been fixed?
A few years ago, Jim DeBelle put um metal covers over either all or almost all the floor outlets as a safety measure. Many, many years ago, we had a girl who had safety pins on the cuff of her jeans and one, it was like bell bottoms and one got caught in one of the outlets and there were sparks flying. She couldn't get her pant leg out. That scared her. So, so um I won't say names, but anyway, um.
Good.
Yeah, I don't, I can find out that information in detail. I'm pretty sure that all the floor outlets are covered. If, if they're not, I think it's as simple as putting a metal similar to the faceplate, looking at the metal thing.
And all working or still or need some attention probably.
I can't answer that, Alan.
That's why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
Uh, open invitation to any board members who do want to look through the science lab at any time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Superintendent update.
So I, I, we pass it out ahead of time. I, I, in the, thinking of time, I can go through it or um if anyone has any questions, I can find out through this button.
You're just um, two minute over me.
Two minute over you. Um, so uh, right now, we're working on uh finalizing ESSER one funds. Um, they um are, are finished in September of uh twenty-two here. Um, the state is gonna put a freeze on any amendments um in the month of May, so we're working with the business office. That was our initial um push was to clean that up, to capture any funds. So we're not giving any funds back to the state and then we'll move on to ESSER two. Um, so we're, we're feeling pretty confident right there that we're able to um capture those um pieces. Um, we're working to fill some open positions. Um, I will have a clean of it uh before the SU board for the Director of Innovation and Instruction uh next Wednesday. Um, and we're excited about that. Uh, Sarah Doran um has joined us. She's our Director of After School Programming. Um, Heather Marquez um also has joined us. Um, she is uh our newest home to school liaison, uh, working with our family engagement team. Uh, we're excited to have her on. And um, and then we've got some folks for summer programming um that are coming on board. We should have brochures and everything out um you know, very soon. Um, all the buildings have been working on emergency planning. Um, and then as an administrative team, we're gonna be reviewing them just after break, um seeing what we need to kind of shore up. And speaking of break, that is uh gonna be next week. Um, we are also, um, our um recovery team, excuse me, has been uh working with focus schools. Um, they're an outside uh group developing our strategic plan. And uh, we'll be using this plan to uh help complete our continuous improvement plan, our SIP plan. And um, then um I handed out a board guidelines, um, a guidebook to board members with uh, with rougher tools.
Good job. You had seven seconds left. So I have a, that, what you sent out was something Chris Pratt had worked on for um school board guidelines. Did you really look at that? That's got some real like odd stuff in it.
That was not Mr. Pratt.
Well, it had his name all over it. So anyway, we just need to look at that and reissue it.
I, I think you were, someone else, someone else sent it out, Mr. Pratt.
Okay. Jack Brier sent out Mr. Pratt's and okay, the other one is perfect. Any questions for Mr. Haas? All right, Mr. Brody. Can you do it in two minutes?
Yeah, mine's not as glamorous.
Here we go.
Lot of basic updates. So the HVAC uh M and E engineering was selected at the last meeting um to uh accept the bid and monitor the job throughout. Uh, the first phase of the ESSER submission was approved under the concept approval. Uh, next, uh, the job needs to be designed uh and we'll submit the project approval request and then the more accurate price for the complete job after we get a a bid on doing the job. Uh, this will hopefully be approved and then we can set a timeline for completion. Um, I've had, Mike hasn't got back to me since I initially uh was in touch with him. Mike um Sullivan, Sullivan, that's, thank you, that is. Mike Sullivan um is our contact with M and E. And I think they're just getting, they're just getting busier, you know, as they go along, but he was very happy to uh know that we had selected them and that we would be getting on. And I said once we had the the, the PO, which should be ready any day now, we'll get it to him and get him working and going to get that job moved forward. Um, the automatic shutdown for the HVAC on wings B and C. Now, just a quick update. Uh, wings A and D, D is the main academic wing and A is the down with the shop and uh speech and language are housed and our transportation are housed. Um, they are under the newer um HVAC equipment and um it has an automatic shut off. Uh, if we do have any uh fire or any smoke, uh excess smoke and the alarm were to go off, um, they would automatically shut down. B and C, unfortunately, because of their age, uh, they would need to be shut down manually. Now, we uh, we had the alarm company come in and meet and they had the electricians come in to meet with them to devise exactly how the job would be done, who would do what to uh connect what. And both parties were clear. When they, when they finished, they were good to go. Uh, parts are ordered and unfortunately, they're expected for June uh to arrive in June. Um, maintenance and administration are trained on the manual shutdown of these units in case of fire. Now, that really only covers uh six AM to eleven-thirty PM. And uh, there was uh a suggestion as well that, okay, during the night when no one's here, what could happen? Um, I had uh in talking with Sean and, and Sean Burke, our head of maintenance, um, we talked about maybe the possibility of shutting down B and C uh during the night. Um, might help the short-term problem. Uh, I spoke with uh Cole uh today about his opinions of what we might do because we, you know, many heads are better than one. Um, and we're gonna meet tomorrow so that we can um show uh our emergency response and fire chief, how the units can be shut down manually. Um, which I think Cole, and don't let me speak for you, but I think that um you know, if there is a fire, you, you, your guys will be on first response and be able to come in and like you could shut them down also. So again, it's just adding on to our, our repertoire until we get these automatic shut offs done in the next few months. So um, I, I don't know if Cole wants to add anything on to that, but.
Yeah, my only concern was shutting them down from eleven till six in the morning. Then you're playing catch-up for how long?
Yeah.
So we might be better off to come up with a plan if there is a fire, an emergency, something, we know where to shut them down, how to shut them down. Um, rather than just shutting them off arbitrarily.
Thank you. Um, number three, the uh polychlorinated biophenols uh testing update. Uh, we, we talked about it at the last meeting. Uh, there's a concern around the state of buildings that um were built before nineteen eighty, which this one is. Um, might have an issue with uh PCBs as they're called in their building material, building materials, uh typically cork and fluorescent light ballasts. Uh, starting in the spring of twenty-twenty, schools will begin testing. Uh, DC is hired a consultant and that, that's the, I, I, I can't remember exactly what that stands for, but that is on the Agency of Natural Resources uh website. It's a, it's people who they uh trust in finding consultants to do the indoor air testing for these PCBs. And they're actually uh listing all the schools that need to be done. Uh, and then they're gonna post it on their website and they'll contact us when, when our, our testing will be uh due or when they're gonna be able to do it. And I've put on there for the, certainly for the board in uh in a link there, the, the full explanation that you can go in and read all the, the ins and outs of what is actually on the uh natural resources website. Um, our electrical generators, um, the project's almost ready to begin. We've got a final ESSER approval to get started. Uh, we're just waiting for the PO to come from um the head office. And then this will allow us to get right into getting these generators ready to go. Uh, it's new electric equipment and new program equipment. Uh, and that'll help us with both our demand and prime responses. Um, uh, again, uh, demand response being if we have a, a power cut or breakdown and prime responses when we could use it to um certainly respond to remounting power in a high usage time and therefore giving us a lower cost rate uh charge to our electric bill. Uh, then we're working on to secure our air permit, federal regulations would go with that. Uh, once the job is complete. Uh, bathroom use. Um, the last few months, we've been experiencing a rise in the number of students vaping at school. Very, very tricky, very hard. Kids are very tricky, as you're all probably aware. Uh, it, it's presented as a big challenge. Uh, and when, when we're alerted of a student undertaking this action, we follow our usual actions for the students found in possession. Uh, these kids are very, very, very tricky between hiding it in uh ceiling tiles, putting it under trash bags, flushing it down the toilet. Um, hiding it somewhere bodily that they know will not be searched. Um, it, it's really, it presents as a really big challenge. Uh, and the consequence of, uh, sorry, we would, we would consequence with following up, but again, it's finding, finding out uh if they have these devices on them when it goes off. We are working with uh Mr. Haas and looking to install environmental sensors, which we have one in our uh young ladies bathroom next to our counseling office. And it has proved very uh efficient in measuring the level of vape that goes on when it goes on. And it allows us, and I don't know, do you want to speak more, Mr. Murphy, to it? Because he's been our go-to guru on this where uh he'll get a notification and we, then normally it's him, but he'll turn up outside the door and wait for the student to walk out. Um, and then we go from there. So again, hopefully uh we're gonna move forward with these environmental sensors uh to have mineral bathrooms and just give us one more thing to keep us on our toes, to keep after our students. Um, HVAC testing, ninth and eleventh grade, uh, smarter balance assessment, this is state testing. Uh, we're gonna administer it to all ninth graders, the math in ELA on four twenty-six and four We're going to administer it to all ninth graders, the math in ELA on 426 and 428. And the 11th grade students will be doing their ESPAC science testing on 428 as well. Trying to cut down on disruption of days, doing another two days and getting it all done to meet state private testing. Sorry, that was more than two minutes, but I did my best.
Yeah, that was nine and a half.
I know, why, I'm sorry.
Molly, can I have 30 seconds on to that?
Sure.
So just to follow up also with what Mr. Brody was saying as far as the, the testing of the PC, PCBs. I did check with the state about, do we, do we repair our HVAC system? Do we do the testing first? And actually, the, what I got back was they want us to do the repairs first because the concern is that in the systems might be sediment. And so by getting it out, it could keep the numbers down type of thing. So that was how they looked at it. So just to follow up on that.
Molly, I'd like to comment, and that is it's Michael, we've David Clark, for those who can't see me at home, that doing a couple of million dollars in HBAC renovations before you know your PCB status is put in the card before the course. And I appreciate the work that Andy did on that. There is quite a body of knowledge which is evolving in Vermont on this now. And the two comments that will make us, number one, it appears that school districts that are contemplating extensive HBAC renovations are looking at expedited status in terms of PCB determinations. And secondly, I believe that in the very recent past, there was a fairly good piece on Seven Days about the situation with testing. Unfortunately, PCBs are one of these classic political footfalls that the legislature has kicked down the road for years, just like public pensions, and hoping that the next legislature will be able to solve it. It's a very extreme example, but Burlington High School goes to school in a vacant Macy's building because their building was condemned. That's the extreme example. But I personally believe that not knowing what your PCB situation is and what steps would be necessary to remediate if you have a problem, and I'm guessing we don't, I don't know that for a fact, to go ahead, as I said before, and pump the money in, hope for the best. I don't think that's a very wise way to proceed. Billions of thousands, in my opinion, but everybody else here does too. Thank you, Molly.
More on what David said. If we're, is there anybody at the state that we can contact to move us up on the list for the PCB testing? Knowing that we have a big HVAC project in the near future that we really need to get done?
That's who I was speaking with, who, where the answer back was, if you did PCB testing during the project, the cost of any necessary remediation would be part of, added to the larger construction project. And you wouldn't need to contemplate another application, another bid, blah, 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 blah. But improved HVAC systems, improved air quality, and that in and of itself mitigates measures of PCB exposure. So that was the answer. That is from Patricia, I'll butcher the last name, Copollonio. And, and she says that they have stated multiple times that we want all, we want to conduct all PCB 1A testing after HVAC renovations occur. I expressed the concern of the board to her. They asked what the high school was and the date. This was back on March 31st. I literally was emailing them while we were here in the meeting, the last meeting. And I let them know that we've submitted, you know, a construction proposal under ARFESR and we're trying to get it through and I'd like to know what's going on. And I haven't heard back from them, so we'll try it again today, but tomorrow.
Tomorrow. I just wanted to recognize that, you know, the vaping in the bathroom is a very difficult situation. You all are dealing with a lot. I'm trying to figure out how we can deal with that. I also was a little concerned when we've unlocked in bathrooms and students don't have access to normal bathroom usage, because that is a basic model we need. And, you know, we're, we're sort of putting this whole thing, you know, putting a problem of a few on to everyone in the building. And so just want to sort of put out there that if there are some additional steps that might be able to make bathrooms a little bit more accessible, whether it's a key in the office, may have to get the key and go and unlock the bathroom. I just know that from a few students that there are long lines, you don't necessarily have time to go. It's challenging all around. I recognize that. Not being able to go to the bathrooms is also challenging.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for our principal? Hearing none. Next on the report is finance. We have nothing right now. Pretty soon, we're going to have a new person in that position and then we'll have regular updates, ESR updates.
Before you go on to ESR updates, I just have a quick question about the deficiency letter that our auditors wrote. They said that they moved the funds to non-major special revenue fund in the amount of $113,356, which was the student activities. Does this mean that that account can carry over from year to year? Is that why they moved it? Or is that a question for later?
Might be a question we have to get an answer for.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to.
Can you email Andy that question? And copy me and we'll, we'll get you an answer. Thank you. Okay, ESR updates. Andy, is that you or?
Can I, do you want me to get it?
Sure.
And then you add two. We talked about two approved concepts. One was for the high school, the HVAC system at the high school. Next steps are to secure the dollars, need specs and bids, plan development permits, and then project approval and submit it again. We also talked about the fact that there are some indoor quality grants out there that might cover parts of it rather than all from ESR. Their cost to redo and access to the high school is virtually not possible under ESR. It was estimated 1.2 million three years ago, but it may cost us more at this point. If we build up here, there is possibly, maybe we can incorporate access or parts of it, but not, not the whole thing. Sensors, we talked about maybe 10 at the high school, which would be 1,980 for 10, 10 years.
Sensors, what's that?
Sensors, the sensors like in the bathroom, like for the vaping and that in different sections. They would do vaping, they'd also check air quality. They'd check for anything that's off, heat temperatures that changed. Say you, your heat went off and before it dropped too low in the wintertime, it would pick up on it and give you an alert. I think we talked about Sean getting an alert one day in, when he was at the conference in Burlington there, so he could call back, that was probably on vaping, but anyway. Talked about insulation, 200 per unit, 10 at the high school. And that included the insulation for those, those sensors. They do motion, noise, air quality, temperature. We also talked about cameras, doors, windows in different buildings throughout the district. Anything else?
No, you just, so yeah, the, the sensors come with a three, a five, or a 10-year plan. So obviously, the longer you go out with the plan, the, yes, the cost is more, but it's cheaper over those 10 years. So that's, that's where those numbers are. And what we're trying to do is look at a system that we, you know, we might not be able to do everything, but like cameras might be the second part. And then, you know, a door system on the next part. So they all would be incorporated so that they don't talk to each other. Because a lot of times, if things don't talk to each other, then it's just more, you know, more work. So, but that is our, our big thing. And, and as Priscilla said, we're, we're looking at some other grant opportunities. One, that's a, you know, it is a long shot, but could incorporate some fixing of driveways or adding on to parking lots, like where the buses are, so that it's not dirt, but some type of a, you know, asphalt or something like that.
Any questions on ESR? Seeing none, we're going to move on to resignations and appointments. Retiree certification of compensation.
That is.
I think that's there.
Miss Madison. Madison. This means a signature, I believe. This is for the school district certification of compensation. Now, to the retirement system, go for that, so you can do that. So that's really what that is.
So who's Miss Madison?
Tina Madison.
Tina Madison.
School counselor.
Okay, so I'm being asked to sign for the schools, school district certification of compensation for Tina Madison, who is retiring and her last day is June 30th?
Correct.
I've got a question on that. Molly, there is no compensation. She's an administrator. There is no compensation under our, under our contract. She's, that's a teacher contract, that's compensation for teachers when they retire, not, not administrators. We had that discussion earlier in the year.
She, this is for compensation for benefits under Vermont State Teachers Retirement System.
Okay.
Yeah, this isn't.
At some point, she was part of that, and so this would allow her to access those funds.
So maybe she isn't right now, but she has money.
So what we're talking about is for her to access her retirement, not the, not the bonus that they.
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry for interrupting. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, next one, Andy, is resignation.
Yeah. Sad to bring it to you, but the resignation of Mr. Murphy, the assistant principal here. He's been offered a position in Springfield High School. He was wanting to move on, is asking the board to accept his resignation.
Is there anything we can do? Flat, I'm sorry, I've got a lot of menu.
I mean, John, one above beyond, I think, over the course of the last three months now, trying to do everything he could.
I really do like you.
I, I, I mean, and I love it here and it's, it's not something I ever thought.
Well, Springfield is very lucky to get you. From my experience of working with you, you've done a good job and you take the kids very seriously. And so, sorry to see you go, but I hope it's a good one.
I appreciate that.
Molly. So, Mr. Murphy was a math teacher. How long were you a math teacher for, Mr. Murphy?
13 years.
13 years, and an excellent math teacher. And all the kids love him, that I'm aware of. And I'm pretty sure the faculty probably echoes the same sentiment. And for us to, I call it promote somebody to the vice principal position and then lowball them on money, and then not come to the table with a little extra money when we're wasting money, in my opinion, in other areas, makes no sense to me when you, I don't want to lose good people because we're never going to be great if we continue to lose good people. So you need good people to run. And we saw what's going on in the science and everything else we is breaking around here. So we need, we need good people to run this place and to improve. Our rank is middle of the road at best in the state. And, you know, I thought, when, I'll call it again, promoted Mr. Murphy to vice principal, that I thought we're in a situation to approve, you know, I, I don't like it. So, thank you.
So I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Murphy's resignation.
If we wrote it down. What's his contract?
Was that their contract?
It's going through next year.
He does?
Yeah.
Hey, buddy.
They say to be negotiated.
Yeah, I thought he was under contract for two years with the, with the money to be negotiated for this next year, so. I hate to accept it.
I'm not accepting it. Not that you ask.
Can we renegotiate? Mr. Haas, I'm looking at you.
From the conversation I had with Springfield, I don't think so, but I mean.
Yeah, but we have the ball right now. The ball's in our court.
Well, Molly, I need to raise a point with you. What happens if this board and Sean Murphy can't come to terms in that renegotiation? We would end up wasting all of our mutual time. I think what we do is we accept his resignation with regret. Wish him well and follow Jason Perry's advice and go hire the best candidate we can possibly find and pay them fairly. I think we should chalk this one up to the cost of tuition. We learned something.
Is there an exit interview being done? I'd like, kind of like to know if this is, you know, what's, how do we promote somebody and then how do we lose them?
We, we do have a system set up, Mr. Murphy and I have spoken once before, but we'll speak again towards the end of his tenure.
Sean, would you care to speak about it? You don't have to, you're on, I get it. I'm just asking, everybody's kind of putting their feelings out here.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I tell people all the time that this was a two-year plan. Was my wife and I were going to work in Vermont for two years and then go across the country. And 13 years later, I was still here and then saw the opportunity to, to move up and work with John off of the soccer field. And I, I mean, I've loved every minute of it. And, I mean, there's, there's lots of factors that weighed into my decision that. Him and I have had pretty candid conversations and him and I'll do an exit interview and I will tell him exactly how I feel and leave it up to him to, if he wants to share the information.
Are you from Springfield?
I mean, I live in Springfield now. I'm from Middlebury, Oklahoma, so. That was part of it, close to home.
Are there any ESR funds available to keep them?
Anyone else have any comments? Okay, somebody give me a motion.
I do, yeah.
I was kind of ignoring her, I guess. Okay, sorry, there's a motion on the floor, hold on, there's a motion on the floor to accept Sean Murphy's resignation and his last day will be June 30th. Discussion, Priscilla.
Just a question, would Mr. Murphy consider that if we were willing to negotiate?
Go ahead to that.
Go ahead. I'm not sure what she's offering, so.
I mean, in the, in the process, I, I started that conversation months ago and feel that, that, that process was taken to the point where I had to make a decision. And I told another place that I would go there and so. I had to make a decision and I told another place that I would go there and so now I got my word and so.
We all know.
I wouldn't be comfortable going back.
Yeah, we all know it's management's word, so.
It's just, this is the first time it's been brought to us, so.
Any other discussion? All right, let's do a roll call. Is Deb right on there?
She is, right up in the.
There she is. Deb.
With regrets, I.
Pamela.
I.
Jason?
No.
Miranda?
Aye.
Margo?
Aye.
Priscilla?
I didn't hear Brenda. Did she vote?
Yes, she did.
She write, aye. Um, I'm gonna vote no then.
June?
Aye.
David votes yes.
David votes yes.
Molly, thank you for running that now because I wanted to at least put it on record that I wanted him to stay.
Unfinished business and it is A. So this is an item that last the last meeting, a motion was tabled and I've been told that it's, that I thought it was just tabled and we were gonna come back to it when we got a policy done. I was told that it was tabled until this meeting. Um, I'm going to recommend that we still table this motion. It is not, we are not prepared to make a decision on this. We decided as a as a board group that it needed to become a policy. But a member has brought it to my attention that it was tabled until this meeting, which I'm not positive of that and I don't have the recording in front of me, but I would like a motion. Can I, David, can I make a motion to table this until the policy is written? Or, or do I have to make a motion first and then table it?
Well, I believe that you could accept a motion from the floor to continue the table to a date certain, Molly.
Okay, thank you very much for the recommendation.
Molly?
So I would like a.
Point of order. It is technically supposed to, like I told you, not just be to table the motion. You insisted on adding until the next meeting and that's why it got put that way when I objected because I went along with you. But it should be simply tabled emotion because then someone has to remove it before it can be voted on anyway.
Priscilla, thank you. I asked for a recommendation from someone who is really good at this. And I trust him. So, June, would you make me a motion to table the motion for the B M, B L M flag until a policy has been written?
Sure. I make a motion to table the motion for the Black Lives Matter flag until a policy of the Bellas Falls Junior High School has been adopted.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or can we vote on this? I would vote on anyways, no discussion on table. Margo?
Um, I just wanted to, it's not necessarily directly related to the motion and tabling, but just in terms of how do we, in order to get to a policy, you know, we have to have a policy.
Yep, we're working on that. Okay, well, that's on the agenda. Okay, or it's gonna be. How do you vote? Today what?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Priscilla?
I'm back to you. Think about it.
Priscilla?
I wanna, I need to think a minute.
June? Yes. David?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Pamela?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Priscilla, do you care to vote or?
That's fine. It passes, it's just it should be done, right?
New business. School board retreat ideas. Does anybody have any ideas of a place that they would like to go and have a you know, we, you know, I think one of the things we talk about is school board ethics and a lot we can, we can make a little agenda. There's no action being taken. It's just a place, a time where we can go and there's no Zoom and there's no cameras and we can talk about rules and how we like to see things done and goals, something that maybe somebody is looking to work on that we haven't brought up. Like, that's a pretty full agenda, so it's out there. It doesn't have to be discussed tonight. Uh, one of the things right now is that it's sometimes hard to find a place because things are still closed up pretty tight around here, but um, that's on there so that if we want to do something this summer, we can. But we have to have a plan. Priscilla?
Um, we could look into whether there's a really nice big room at Vermont Academy that they use the separate room. Like off. Like Chivers Center, yeah, thank you, um, which is really nice. I don't know cost for doing that, but that might be a possibility.
Okay, thank you. So we don't have to make any decisions now, but that's just something that we need to, it'll probably be on next meeting just to try to find, kind of get an idea what we want to do.
What happened, Deb?
Hi, Deb?
Hi, um, just as, as a side idea, if you want something local and um, low, low cost because I'm assuming there's some costs involved in any place else we go. Um, the Masonic Temple here in Bellas Falls leases out their property. Um, there's a, it's a low rate. I don't know exactly what it is. I have to check it out, but we could bring in water and our own food for sandwiches, whatever if we wanted to do that. It would be a low cost and local. That was my suggestion. That's it.
Thank you. So, Priscilla, will you find out what the Vermont Academy would cost and Deb, will you find out about Masonic Temple?
Yes.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, Paul.
Um, also when Deb does that, if she finds out, you know, if anybody here knows isn't a member of Masonic Temple, it's lower.
My husband is.
Okay, teacher roster. Are you speaking the teacher roster? Andy?
Um, so the roster in front of you are the recommendations for uh, next year for, for teachers. There are three folks on here who um, the school has interviewed. They'll wait on some uh, paperwork from John, uh, but those are the oral teacher, uh, math teacher, a science teacher. Hope you have those on there. I can have those removed. They were added on.
Jason?
Uh, so, any of the teachers are talking about the math course and the science that are on this roster right now? Yes. Well, I can, I can tell you who they are and we can strike them from our.
I'd like to make a recommendation that if we approved the teacher roster, that we do so without the names of the pending.
I wasn't sure Jason was done. Are you done, Jason?
No, I'm not. I'm trying to, so I asked for this on the agenda. And my, my point was, when I joined this board in two thousand twenty-one, um, our teacher, the student ratio was nine to one. And in two thousand twenty, it was twelve to one. And this year, based on, it's twenty-nine teachers, two guidance counselors, one librarian. Twenty-nine, wait, three hundred and two students. That's what Mr. Bradley said a couple of weeks ago. Our teacher to student ratio would have been ten to one, so it would have been, would have had more. And I, and can somebody help me out? Is step eighteen the highest you can go?
Yes.
Okay, so out of that, you have fifteen teachers at step eighteen. And um, what, I have two concerns and I don't want this painted the wrong way. I, my concern is that people are getting comfortable in their positions. Um, we have until April fifteenth to approve this roster, I believe. Um, and I want to make sure, you know, and we, I talked to Mr. Bradley last year. Even a year before that, I don't even know how long I've been on this board now. Um, about improving our rank in the state. We don't have the numbers yet. What we were um, fifteenth, and then Green Mountain moved up to nine. And Green Mountain's teacher to student ratio was twelve to one and Bradbrook was sixteen to one. So, we're a four years. And, and our teacher to student ratio, we're actually fourth in the state as far as the number of teachers per student. So it seems like we have a lot of and I don't want to say this the wrong way because I'm sure of all great people. But if we have so many people and we're not moving the needle and we have, we just saw things that are broke, broken and stuff like that. We got, I, I'd like to right-size it and make sure we're putting the money to, putting my, my money as a taxpayer to good use to make sure that we are doing the right things for, for the students. And um, again, if the education in our rank is improving and we're number one, then, all right, that, that's a great number, but I don't know if this number is a good number or a bad number because we don't know our rank yet. And if we haven't improved, then to me, it's a bad number. You lost. So we're already losing a pretty good administrator. So I don't want to keep losing. And uh, so with Mr. Murphy, help me out with the math. You're twenty-six out of, out of uh, three oh-two. What's our ratio on that? So it's not twenty-nine, it's twenty-six, right? That's eleven, that's eleven, eleven to one. So, so it is better. Um, you know. So now the question is, do you need, do you need those three additional teachers? What formula do we have that says we need how many, what is the perfect number? How many teachers do we need per student? What, what is the, what is the goal? I mean, it's not about the money. I want to have great uh, education for the kids. Period. End of discussion. Want to be number one. That's it.
Bradley?
I want to be number one too. And again, chicken and egg theory. We keep taking away, then the spiral goes that way. I mean, that's just my theory. You know, for example, one of those, one of those two point six seven teachers that you talk about. The point six seven, if you take it away, you cancel our program. And if you want to do that, then the board are able to do that. I don't.
Most teachers are already in the budget?
Yeah, yeah, all, all the, all the teachers in. The budget's voted on by the taxpayer, which I'm one as well. Um, and it's accounted for for this year. Um, again, when I bring this, the teachers to the board for voting on, I'll have the outgoing teachers ranked because I believe that's important to some. Uh, the outgoing teachers, where they ranked on the level. And the incoming ones, which you'll see two of the three are way down on the ones that are outgoing. So in other words, we're paying the new teachers a lot less coming in, so we are saving money. Um, not that that's always the important side of things, as you just pointed out with the show, man, yeah. Um, we want quality people. We want to get quality people. So we need to get quality people. You're right, there is a lot of work that needs done. Hundred percent.
But the way I've learned it is that, so we pass a budget, right? And Deb, maybe you can help me out with this, Deb. We pass a budget, it's a dollar amount. That doesn't mean you get so many, it's just, it's just a dollar amount to use on everything, right? So I just, I don't know. I don't know what the right number is and I'm not, I'm not here every day, so I can't, it's not my job to run this place.
Can I speak to that real quick as well? Just from, so the, one of the big things in the US News and World reports is AP scores. And if we, so one of those teachers on there is a math teacher, if we don't bring that math teacher back, then we're no longer offering AP Calc. Because we, that's, that's one of our lowest in terms of enrollment. Um, we wouldn't be able to offer that. We'd farm that out and, and maybe they're taking it on a BTVLC and, and their scores aren't going to be as good because they're not an online learner. They, they prefer to be in the classroom. One of those is a, is a music teacher. We're looking at offering another AP in our music department next year. It's uh, what, AP Music Theory, I think. Um, having that person there would support that program. You've got a science teacher. Ideally, we're bringing back, um, whether it's AP Physics or AP Biology or AP Chemistry. And again, needing, needing those folks to be able to teach those classes. When we, we do our ninth grade visits, we have our ninth graders from the middle school come in and then we also invite area ninth graders in. And one of my selling points to kids that are looking for variety in classes or high-level classes is that we're a small school that is able to creatively offer a large school schedule. So we have those extras that bring those kids in, whether they're APs or um, electives, honors level courses. Kids, pay attention to that. We had a, a young lady from, I think, she was at the Putney School and her Putney Grammar and she was looking at a series of prep schools and we were able to give a pretty good pitch so that she's considering us among them and is going to weigh the financial options because we have four APs that we offer in our social studies department. We have um, all the way up through AP Calculus. And then if a kid gets there quickly, we can offer, um, we had a kid go down to Keene at Duke calc two years ago. So um, we have things available to us because we have those numbers.
That's a very good question. And I'm just trying to understand it. I don't want to blow everybody up. Um, so last year it says took at least one AP exam, twenty-five percent. Does that mean twenty-five percent of students here took one AP exam and says pass at least one AP exam, seventeen percent. So I believe that's twenty, sorry, twenty-five percent of the students who took that, who took an AP class, took at least one. I don't believe it's twenty-five percent of the student population. And that's seventeen percent of that, so. So I, I don't have exactly what you have in front of you, so. That's just last year's US News. I, I have that here before. I just want to, again, I, I just want to make sure that we're getting our bang for our buck. You know what I mean? Because we're all paying for this. I want to make sure it's working correctly. So if it's not, then we gotta pivot, right? I mean, that's what you do in business. It's not work and fix it.
I think another Jason's this too, if I may, Molly, if I may speak. Um, another hugely important factor of our ranking with News and World is graduation rate. And our graduation rate, the needle is moving up on that. And the more um, we're able to support kids, uh, especially through this time of the pandemic, we're not going to see as much of a decline as we could. And that, that's gonna, that's gonna impact that score too, so.
Margo, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to Jason, I appreciate you bringing up these questions because I think it is important for us to always be examining. You know, not just resting on what we do because we've always done it that way. So I think that's really important. I also think that the school is sort of a tricky size. We're not a small school, but we're not a big school. We're sort of this awkward size in between. And um, I appreciate what you said, Sean, about, you know, that we are able to offer and we do offer classes that bigger schools offer. There's a lot of schools our size that don't have the variety of classes that we offer. And I do think that is important um, to be able to offer students so that we're meeting a range of needs. But it does make it tricky because it does reduce our numbers in classes and therefore our student. But it does make it tricky, because it does reduce our numbers in classes, and therefore our student teacher ratios do go down, because we're trying to meet a broader range of student needs.
We do have uh, well, a student this year from Black River, we've, in, in my time of doing uh, what Mr. Murphy's doing now, um, I, I lead purple and I sell the school as well as anybody could do it. And for example, next Wednesday, I'll be going up to uh, Lethersfield again, as I've done every year, to pitch to their students at, they, they don't have a designated high school, so again, that's a form of revenue. So to be able to go and, and pitch and maybe um, capture one or two of those kids. Again, that's another form of revenue as well, at, you know, nineteen to up to twenty thousand a student. And, and guaranteeing them, so, offering them somewhat of a very good education. But, so, as you say, it is, it is tough. We are right kind of in that little, that little zone, small to, to big.
Okay.
Anyway.
Priscilla?
Um, I guess I needed clarification on, on the ones that you said you're going to take some off, but also I need clarification on, there are five listed for math, and I thought we had a half that was coming from a grant, so that we had four and a half plus a half.
Five gone and then up will be final.
Half would be, yeah, so, so that would not be a cost to us. Also, I thought the, um, I saw the, um, the Zed sixty-seven percent on the grant thing, and we were approved that at the issue.
The other way around. It's, it's thirteen percent, it's through the grant.
Thirteen percent, okay, so that makes it a whole, a whole is what you're saying? Okay. I understand that one, but can you clarify who? Not, and are we putting someone else in that place?
In, in which place?
In, in the ones that you were talking about.
So they're currently open positions?
Okay, what positions are?
So it's the coral?
In addition to these that are, we're seeing?
So the coral teacher or director at sixty-seven percent has not been finalized yet?
Okay. But we are offering that one.
The math teacher with the initials A L G R, that's not been approved yet. And the science teacher, M A P Y, that's not been approved yet.
June, did you have a question?
I do. Um, so this is, this list is um, as of right this moment. But in my understanding, we haven't even gotten back teacher contracts yet?
We, we, so we need you to approve this list, so we can offer them their contracts. So it's, it's not waiting until, it's not waiting until the fifteenth to then approve. It's, we need you to approve the list, so that we can then draft the contracts to offer them by April fifteenth.
Which is Friday, okay.
Margot, what was your motion?
Uh, I'd make a motion that we approve the teacher roster as written, as, without the names under three oh two.
Is there any more discussion? All right. Is Deb right here?
She just came back. I didn't realize that she even knocked off. Sorry Deb, that's my fault. Oh, there you go. Now she's connected.
Deb, are you there?
Yeah, my computer just like zonked out and closed everything, so, thank you.
I have a motion on the board to accept the teacher roster as written.
Minus three.
Aye.
No, she said only minus the names.
Yeah, okay, yes.
I'll say aye, if you want my vote.
Excuse me, I do. Pamela?
Aye.
Jason?
Yes.
Brenda?
Aye.
Margot?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Teacher roster has been approved. The Heritage Mills guest speaker has not shown up.
Yeah. Oh, I have an, I have an update on that.
Okay.
Okay, the update is that, uh, uh, I'm sorry, you ready for that? It's brief. Um, the update is that Mr. Demuro um, was hit with an, well, had last-minute eviction, uh, property that they have in Windsor of equipment storage and that sort of thing. And he scrambled to fi, to get an extension on that, and they're working on it, um, which probably um, took precedence over appearing here um, to ask for our uh, letter of support. Um, so I'm assuming we could reschedule him for next month and he'd be fine with it at this point.
Okay.
I'll get back.
The next one is you too. You had this on as an agenda item, not sure what you're looking for, so resource sharing between the high school and municipalities.
Um, yes, actually, um, the ARPA conversation that we started in the municipality last month, brought this to the fore. Ricky's aware of that, he was at the meeting as well. Um, the concern was, a lot of the areas that the citizens would like to see ARPA funds placed um, has to do with housing and um, and the, which also of course in itself covers, covers things like food insecurity and homelessness and mental health. And there are so many things that the school system does um, for its students. Um, we thought perhaps resource sharing, or at least information sharing with the municipality, might actually um, broaden the usage of programs and make things better in our community, and that was the idea, was um, wanting to see if there is um, a desire among school boards to um, to have, say, to put together maybe once a quarter meeting or something with the municipalities of Rockingham, Bellas Falls, and Saxons River, to talk about the needs of our community that are not well-covered by the municipality, it's the municipalities themselves, but that the school boards have many resource areas that they could talk about and share. That was it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jason, the next thing is, you put on, you wanted on the agenda, masking, what will be done in the future? Would you like to speak to that?
Actually, I'd like to not speak about it.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Um, we have date and items for next agenda. The next date is April twenty-fifth. We will have an athletic director presentation. We are not having a Black Lives Matter flag, because we have to have a policy committee, and it's vacation week next week, and nobody wants to meet. And we are going to have um, the topic of the pledge allegiance um, being done more in the high school. We are at director's comments. Deb?
Oh, please come back to me. Please come back to me.
Pamela?
Um, yes, I actually have something. Um, I've got it prepared, so it'll be a little bit. Um, neuroscientist Abhijit NASCAR stated, "All Lives Matter is an intellectual luxury cooked up by couch philosophers, whereas Black Lives Matter is an actual manifestation of the value of life through tangible human actions, which is molding a world where all lives truly matter, not theoretically, but actually." I commend Grace Wyres, I'm probably saying that wrong, I'm sorry Grace, for her presentation. She presented the last board meeting and the time she took to research, prepare, and advocate. She spoke up to speak for those who may not always feel like their voices are heard, or worse, that their voice is silenced by others. "I see a lot of myself in Grace and I admire her courage to speak up. I grew up in South Georgia where blatant racism was prevalent. For a parochial private school I attended from kindergarten until ninth grade, turned out to be a segregation school for white flight students. I grew up hearing racial slurs, seeing prejudice on a daily basis, told not to go to the other side of tracks, all because of racism. I witnessed some of the pain that my black brothers and sisters experienced with my own eyes and ears. My first memory of someone who did not look like me was my childhood nanny, who went by the name Honey. Honey treated me like family, and that love and affection from my family taught me more than any racist propaganda that, that the Daughters of Confederacy wrote. Also known as my eighth grade history textbook, is the truth. How could I treat her any differently or ignore her suffering? I ultimately left that school in protest because of the blatant racism that surrounded me. My parents thought they were sending me to the best school, but it was nothing more than the white supremacist narrative being disguised as equality education. I have since done a lot of reading, learning, and listening to understand more of the inherent racism that is in our society and what I can do to help break this continuing narrative. Some of my closest friends are black, including the godfather of my children. But I also acknowledge that there is more work still to be done within myself and helping educate others. Saying racism doesn't exist here and isn't a problem in Vermont is willful ignorance. People here may not realize they're racist due to living in a homogenous bubble. I have seen and heard it here in Vermont, and so have my children. In my honest truth, our last board meeting reminded me of life in South Georgia from twenty-plus, twenty-five-plus years ago. The racist remarks from board members, either intentionally or not, were shameful and disturbing. I implore all board members to do more to educate yourself using credible and factual information. We are supposed to represent all students and their families within this community. If we willfully ignore the systemic racism, then we are not truly representing all of our constituents. Thank you."
Jason?
Uh, thank you, Molly. It's, it's amazing how much work it can get done when you're not looking to receive credit. And uh, we have a lot of work to do. It's going to take a lot of thoughtful, thoughtful communication to move the needle forward. Thank you.
Brenda?
I'm all set.
David, I apologize. I missed you on the last vote, because you're not sitting at the table with us.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to turn my back to the audience.
Do you have any?
For that, I, for that, I apologize. I would have supported the motion. I'm under director's comments.
You are.
I would have supported the motion on the teacher roster, okay. Um, but we're under director's comments, and I want to say that I, uh, I believe that advanced placement is a very expensive luxury in a small school like this. And um, some people undoubtedly are aware of it, and others might not be, that um, it's quite a, quite a debate in education as to whether it might actually be time to throw AP overboard in favor of dual enrollment. And the argument uh, for AP, the obvious argument that we made tonight is it helps our ranking with uh, US News and World Report. I don't care. Um, I think it's more important what you're delivering to your kids. And I think that if we're going to have a board retreat, maybe one of the things we should be discussing are the pros and cons of AP versus dual enrollment, where our kids get the same college credits that they can potentially get out of AP, possibly more cost-effectively, and arguably um, those credits would be just as well-earned um, as AP credits are. There's a deep and abiding irony here. And that is that this school for a long time was not a member of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. But when we uh, sought re-accreditation, one of the things that uh, NEAS, as it's known for short, was looking for was um, a, not only a commitment to AP, but um, a commitment to getting as large a cohort as possible into AP. For a while, we'd be pretty good at that. In fact, um, around two thousand fifteen, I believe, and maybe John Brody would have a better recall of it than I do, we actually made National AP Honor Roll, which was certainly um, a significant achievement. What was, what was even a larger achievement was that we made it again the next year. And that's even more significant, because it was a small, far smaller cohort. I think about four hundred schools total in the US made AP Honor Roll two years in a row, for which the criteria was to increase the size of your cohort and improve your scores, okay? Somewhere after two thousand sixteen, we fell off the wagon. And I do not understand exactly why, but I think it's at least a convenient time to take a look again at AP and try to make some tough decisions about whether we're going to recommit AP, in which case we ought to be recommitting to making sure that essentially AP is available to all students in this school, and not the, just the academic high flyers that we try to uh, attract from institutions like the Putney Grammar School, or whether we do a better job servicing both our students and our taxpayers by possibly considering moving away from AP and toward dual enrollment. Okay, that's tonight's speech. It's something I hope we can bring up, maybe if, if and when we have a board retreat.
Thank you. Margot?
Um, I just wanted to thank Mr. Murphy for all of your years of being a part of the Bellas Falls community, and good luck moving forward. I miss you.
Priscilla?
I'd like to say that all comments are important. I'm personally proud of the student who came to our meeting, but I'm also pleased to hear from parents and other community members who express concerns at our meetings. Both deserve to be respected for bringing their views to us. Consideration and kindness should be our goal for all in every act we take. Let's work for that.
June?
I'm a little concerned, because um, a board member thought that some of us were uneducated um, in regards to the Black Lives Matter agenda, flag, um, prejudice. Um, I know we got called out on social media um, because we didn't agree with something that was brought before the board. I, I listened to that meeting again after I read the social media post. I don't feel, and maybe this is just my perspective, but I don't feel that we were being, anyone was being rude um, to Grace. I appreciate Grace for coming forward and um, with her concern and proposal. But I don't think that, like Priscilla's always preaching, be kind, be nice to each other. If you can disagree and still be nice, and um, I guess that's all I have to say, because that's... Yeah, that's it. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb wanted to say something.
Oh, sorry Deb.
No, I asked you to come back to me, because I wa, wasn't, my, I just wasn't there yet. Um, but I am now, and, and, and really what this is, because we spent a lot of time talking about the last meeting and the item that's going to be on a policy committee, which I'm not, I have like three sentences to say, and I'm going to do it now, and it's going to be very unpopular. Um, and I'm part of a DEI committee for VLCT, by the way. I just want to clear this up. Uh, flying a flag doesn't fix a problem. Let me back up. Flying a flag or making declarations doesn't fix a problem. It's like whitewashing the fence that needs to come down. Let's, if we want to do something, we need to do the hard work and not, um, like confronting our own biases through the work of classwork and inner work in order to make these things change. And so let's do the work and not cover up our problem with a sheet. That's all I have to say about it. It's pretty clear that there are issues, but we need to do them through the hard work, not by saying we did something and not really doing anything at all. Thank you.
Thank you. There has been a lot said about this, and a lot of people have, you know, on social media, made direct, uh, made comments and used public comments. Some pretty strong uh, remarks were made today in, in public comments. Um, you know, I, we, we all have to, and I've been proven it time and time again, you know, we, we are responsible for what we say, so we should be very careful what we say. Think about what you're going to say, because this is all recorded, we can all go back and listen to it again, and... the social media part is part of our lives now, which, you know, I think all of us wish it wasn't there, but we all look at it, so. But what is said in a meeting like this? We, um, I think we just, you know, be careful what kind of things you say, if you don't want to have it come back. Because I think that sometimes, you know, I've had to learn to control my feelings and not say what's on my sleeve, because probably wouldn't be good. And we had a good meeting tonight, thank you very much, Sean. Sorry, man. My daughter's been mad at me, she told me I couldn't let you go. Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.